Okay. All right. Welcome to the May 28th, 2024 Special Joint Meeting of the City Council and the Finance Committee. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all council members are present and Finance Committee members, Colapi and Curry, have an excused absence.
Fantastic. So before we get into the Finance Committee, we're going to do a really special presentation recognizing Temple Bot Yam. So Rabbi Gersh, if you could come on forward. So this is really special. So Robin Grant and I have invited up Rabbi Gersh and more specifically Temple Bot Yam. I was going to say you can bring up whomever you would like to bring up. I'm going to read a proclamation and then after I read the proclamation, Rabbi Gersh, if you could introduce folks and then the floor will be yours. We're really excited because this is their 50th year here in Newport Beach and it's a really special occasion and so I appreciate everyone coming. So let me read the proclamation first. Whereas Temple Bot Yam is a Reform congregation affiliated with the Union of Reform Judaism and whereas Temple Bot Yam was organized in June 1973 by eight founding families interested in starting a new temple in Newport Beach and whereas Temple Bot Yam entered into escrow at the Irvine Company for a four acre site on Camelback Street and Jamboree Road and then bought a prefabricated building in Newport Center that had been vacated, dozens of congregants gathered at 2:08 a.m. on August 11th, 1976 to follow the structure as movers, workers with artificial light, rolled the building down Jamboree Road to the temple's optioned site. This became the first Jewish building on the Irvine Ranch. And whereas Temple Bot Yam has hosted many world leaders to address the congregations such as Yechek, oh, I know I messed that one up, sorry, Rabin, Henry Kissinger, Eli Weiselman, Shimon Perez, Benjamin Netanyahu and Ehud Barak. And whereas the temple serves a diverse membership made up of approximately 500 families, including families with young children, young married couples, singles, empty nesters, interfaith families and seniors. And whereas the Newport Beach and surrounding communities have been enriched over the past half century by Temple Bot Yam's presence and congregation's generous and volunteering spirit, now therefore I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Temple Bot Yam for its 50th anniversary here in Newport Beach. Congratulations. Yep.
You asked me to introduce some folks here and we have fellow clergy members. We have Rabbi Miriam Phillips and Cantor Lisa Waltsman, as well as our Executive Director, Sue Penn. We have our current President Adrian Cohen, as well as incoming President Matt Cabrera. And we have several other leaders and longtime members of our congregation in attendance, including one who represents a handful of founding families. Darryl Miller is here. His parents were part of the founding generation half a century ago. So it's wonderful to have all of these folks here joining us today to receive this proclamation. I want to just share that the Jewish people are named for a little tiny patch of land in the hills of the land of Israel, the Holy Land. And many people know that, but what many people don't know is that the Jewish people's name itself, Yehudim, not only means that we come from that area thousands of years back, Judea, but it means that we are connected to the word to give thanks, lehodot. The Jewish people are named as the people who give thanks. And so on this opportunity to be with all of you, I want to give thanks to you, Mayor O'Neill, for your support and encouragement of our community, especially in the last several months, your presence and support has been much appreciated, along with Robin Grant, who came in and met with me as well. We appreciate the Newport Beach Police providing us security and a safe place to be here in the community. I want to give thanks to all of our neighbors around Newport Beach of variety of faiths and of no faith, who have made us part of the fabric of Newport Beach and surrounding Orange County communities through these 50 years. I want to thank the founders and all of those who've led Temple Bot Yam through the decades, right up until today. And I want to conclude by thanking God for the opportunity to stand here and be with you all and to celebrate this milestone in the history of our congregation. And I'll do that with the blessing that we say when we are particularly thankful for reaching a joyful moment. Baruch ata Adonai, Eloheinu Melech Ha'olam, shechayanu ve'kiymanu ve'higyanu la'azman hazer. We thank you, God, for reaching this joyful moment. Thank you all.
Thank you. Whoa, whoa, hang on, hang on. We cannot do a Newport Beach City Council proclamation without a photo. So what we're going to do is if all of you could meet us over at the flags, I will present the proclamation over there.
Okay.
All right. We're going to move into our current business, which is the review of the proposed fiscal year. Oh, you need help moving that back, Jason? Okay. The current business review of the proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025 operating budget. And once you're ready, go ahead with the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Jason LMM, Finance Director, joined by Shelby Bergwijn, Acting Deputy Finance Director. So tonight's presentation will focus primarily on the operating budget since Public Works has a separate presentation for you tonight on the proposed capital improvement program. This budget continues to provide funding for the budget priorities listed on this slide. This year's budget also has an additional focus on the continued pay down of the pension liability, ensuring proper funding for long-term capital needs, and addressing council priorities that were identified at the planning session in February. The Newport Beach has a very comprehensive budget review process, which includes nine opportunities for public comment, including today's review of the operating budget. I also wanted to point out that the budget that's presented to you today has been reviewed by the Finance Committee over the past several months, which began with an update to the long-range financial forecast, a 20-year planning tool which projects the city will be on solid financial footing for the years to come. The proposed budget reflects a 4.6% increase in operating expenditures, which includes funding for routine personnel costs such as cost of living adjustments or COLAs and merit increases. The budget also includes costs associated with proposed program enhancement requests, which we'll dig into further. In addition, the budget includes funding for the continuation of the city's pension pay down strategy with the goal of eliminating the city's pension liability in the next nine years. Transfers and CIP-related amounts are up for the reasons articulated on this slide and relate to capital activities. The proposed budget for next fiscal year reflects a $440 million operating budget. The general fund is the city's primary operating fund, which makes up 71% of the city's operating budget. And in a moment, Shelby is going to provide you with an overview of the 5.9% increase in the general fund's budget. However, I did want to point out that the 5.4% increase in the Tidlens Fund largely relates to an increase in costs in connection with an updated cost allocation plan and also relates to a program enhancement request to replace a patrol vessel. The 14.6% increase in the water fund largely relates to transfer out of the Water Capital Fund for $4 million of capital improvements to various water mains that cross under the Newport Bay. The 11% increase in other funds largely relates to a transfer from the FFP Fund for the construction of the Balboa Library Fire Station Number One project. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Shelby.
Moving into the general fund overview. Total projected general fund revenue for fiscal year 2024, 25 is $316.6 million. This is 2.5% higher than our current year-end projections for fiscal year 23, 24. The primary drivers of growth are in property tax, as well as a projected rebound in sales tax after the decline that we're currently seeing in the current year, and modest increases to TOT and other fees and charges. City's main three revenue sources in the general fund represent 72% of total general fund revenues. Property tax, which represents 48% of total general fund revenues, is projected to grow by 4% next fiscal year. This is largely due to the annual inflation that's capped at 2% under Prop 13, as well as increases to assessed values due to changes in ownership. Sales tax, which represents 14% of general fund revenues, is projected to grow by 5.3% over current year-end projections. The growth is largely driven by the autos and transportation category, as well as restaurants and hotels. Transient occupancy tax, or TOT, which represents 10% of general fund revenues, is projected to increase by 4.2% over current year-end estimates. The proposed general fund expenditure budget totals $311.3 million. This is a 5.9 increase over the current year adopted budget and it includes $40 million towards paying down the city's unfunded pension liability with CalPERS, which is the same level included in the current year's adopted budget. Additionally, there are $1.8 million in program enhancements in the general fund that will also go through. This is a reconciliation of the 5.9% growth in the general fund budget from the current year to the proposed budget for next year. Internal service charges are growing by $1.8 million. The majority of this is increases to the workers' comp and general liability premiums. General fund program enhancements make up another $1.8 million. Inflationary adjustments to maintenance and operating budgets total just over $1 million. Cost of living adjustments, which are approved at 3%, merit increases, et cetera, make up 2.6% of the total general fund growth at $7.7 million. And then operating expenses for the Dove Street property added $1.65 million to the budget, but that's offset by revenues. And then there are a few one-time enhancements in last year's budget that have been backed out, including the new ambulance for fire and the one-time recruitment assistance that was budgeted. Increases to various capital funds that were, sorry, increases to transfers to various capital funds that were originally discussed at the council planning session have added $3.8 million to the general fund budget as well. Moving into the proposed program enhancements and staffing changes. Here's a summary of the proposed enhancements by fund and department. All proposed enhancements total $2.3 million with $1.8 million in the general fund. However, as you know, the general fund subsidizes the Tidlens Fund, so those enhancements will pass through to the general fund as well. The police department is proposing to add a new crime information center, which will incorporate real-time crime analysis and enhanced cybercrime investigation capability, specializing in retrieving and analyzing many types of digital evidence. Successful implementation of the crime information center will result in faster responses to crimes in progress and faster identification and arrest of individuals who have committed property or violent crimes in Newport Beach. In order to operate the new crime information center, we are proposing adding three full-time police civilian investigators. Additionally, a new automated license plate reader system is proposed. Implementation of a citywide automated license plate reader system will benefit the public by enabling quick identification of vehicles used in crimes, allowing for faster apprehension of suspects and deterring future crimes. The FUSIS intelligence ecosystem will be the foundation of day-to-day crime information center operations and will enable integration of multiple systems into a single ecosystem for crime analysis and investigation. Asset forfeiture funds are proposed to be allocated for crime information center software and equipment. And asset forfeiture funds are also proposed to be used for a new use-of-force immersive training simulator, which is a virtual training environment that will be used to equip police department employees with de-escalation skills and tools for using the minimum level of force necessary to effect arrests. The public will benefit from having well-trained officers, reduced injuries to officers and increased protection from liability. Additional funds are also proposed for outside agency staffing for the Fourth of July, the Mounted Enforcement Unit, and an increased uniform budgets. Remaining non-personnel enhancements include $40,000 for building maintenance of fire stations, $40,000 for building maintenance at new city facilities such as the animal shelter and the new junior lifeguard building, a $50,000 increase in contract services for the Streets and Beaches Program, $230,000 in increased programming for youth programs and instructor payments at various community centers, $100,000 increase to Harbor's capital budget to help fund the replacement of a patrol vessel, and a $30,000 increase in the Harbor Department for crane maintenance. This slide lists all additional staffing, position reclassifications and conversions from part-time to full-time. In the city attorney's office, we are proposing increasing part-time paralegal hours by 0.25 FTE. In community development, we are proposing expanding the city's code enforcement program by adding one full-time code enforcement officer, as well as converting one part-time code enforcement officer to full-time. Additionally, we are proposing adding a full-time building inspector, and that will have a corresponding decrease in the contract services budget. City manager's office is proposing reclassifying a management analyst to a senior management analyst, as well as converting and transferring a department assistant from the city clerk's department into an administrative assistant. Finance department is proposing reclassifying a revenue auditor to a management analyst, as well as converting 0.70 FTE part-time fiscal specialist into a full-time fiscal specialist. The fire department is proposing converting five firefighters to firefighter paramedics, as well as title changes for the life safety specialists. The police department is proposing three civilian investigators that we saw on the prior slide to staff the new crime information center. Public Works is proposing adding an engineering technician, reclassifying a senior engineer to a principal engineer, and reclassifying the city traffic engineer to a transportation manager slash city traffic engineer. In recreation, it is proposed to reduce hours associated with the city's preschool program. Total general fund personnel enhancements include increasing full-time staff by eight and reducing part-time FTEs by 2.42. In the Tidlens Fund, Harbor is proposing to reclassify a department assistant to an administrative assistant. And there is an additional .5 FTE part-time code enforcement officer that is proposed to be converted to full-time in the environmental liability fund. This is also part of the overall expansion of the code enforcement program. And in the water fund, utilities is proposing reclassifying part-time maintenance aides to utility specialists. This chart shows total personnel over the years. If approved, the fiscal year 25 budget will add nine full-time positions and reduce part-time FTE by 2.9, bringing the total number of positions to 921. I'm going to turn it back over to Jason.
So the budget as a whole for the general fund reflects a $5.3 million surplus. However, the baseline budget for the general fund includes a $40 million allocation towards paying down the city's pension liability. It's recommended that an additional $5 million appropriation be made at the time of budget adoption to bring the total paid towards the city's pension liability to 45 million, which is consistent with the city's pension pay down strategy. Therefore, a structural surplus of about $290,000 is projected for fiscal year 24, 25, which takes into consideration the recommended budget amendment of 5 million. Last fall, CalPERS announced a 6.1% return for fiscal year 22, 23, which is just short of the 6.8% expected rate of return. Since the return on investments fell short of the expected rate of return, it's considered an actuarial loss, which means it resulted in an increase in the city's unfunded pension liability. However, since the city made a $45 million payment to CalPERS, which is actually about 14 million more than what is required to be made, it resulted in a decrease in the pension liability and improved the funded status. This chart shows the city's pension funded status over the last 17 years, from 2007 to 2023. The city's pension liability was 92% funded in 2007, but fell to 57% funded in 2009, when the stock market crashed during the Great Recession. So the blue line shows CalPERS investment returns, while the yellow line shows the expected rate of return. When CalPERS fails to earn the expected rate of return, it has a direct impact on the city's funded status. Nonetheless, since the city has made a significant improvement in the funded status because the city council is committed to an aggressive pension pay down strategy.
Yeah, so stay here for just a second. So this is one where, because this is, this is my last budget as Chairman of the City's Finance Committee. I've been doing this for way too long now. When I first joined the City's Finance Committee, it was right in that '16 budget cycle where we had dipped down to just under 64% funded. This was one of the areas that I spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to get better and there are not a lot of folks, members of the public in the audience, so hopefully there are a few people watching online. But my point, and this is perhaps a little bit more for my fellow council members, who are going to be up for much longer than I will be and Brad will be. This really matters. I mean, the more, we have devoted a lot of discretionary money to getting this up. And I know the difference between '16 and '23 is about 9%, maybe 8%. But the point there is that it's taken a lot of effort to even get 8% higher. And this is a lot like, this is a lot like the pavement problem, where if you let it go down too low, it becomes way too expensive to bring it back up. And there are cities right now in Orange County that are facing tipping points, and I'm not sure they realize it yet, but they're going to realize it soon that the amount of money going toward the unfunded pension liability is going to really eat into services. We've got a North County city right now that's looking at having to put a sales tax measure on the ballot because they just don't even have cash flow to even pay the minimum amount on their unfunded pension liability and maintain services. So making sure that we're getting out ahead of this one and continuing on a path that we've set and is affordable matters a lot because what you can see here very clearly is you can't count on CalPERS to be nailing that number that they keep looking for. Do we have any idea, let's see, we're coming up soon, do we have any idea where they are now?
They're actually at 8.9%, but we still have another month or so left.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, that would be great. That'd be great for, well, particularly for me, because I'd be able to go out on a little bit of a higher note on this. But yeah, but I guess my point, though, is there is a little bit of an up and down. You can see obviously 21 high, 22 low, and it wiped out all of the gain just in one year. So making sure that we remain steady on this matters a lot because there is going to be a council. I don't know exactly when, probably eight, 10 years out. There's going to be a council that's going to have about $50 million extra a year to be spending. But until then, I've been asked a lot about this one. This funded status increase, again, although it's only about 8% or so, this will be one that I'll end up really proud of at the end of the term. So just encourage folks to stay steady on this particular funded path. All right. Thanks, Jason. Go ahead.
So 10 years ago, the city council implemented pension reform by creating a lower benefit plan for new employees. So tier two classic represents those employees that were CalPERS members prior to 2013, but were hired by the city after 2012. The Public Employee Pension Reform Act, or PAPRA, created a third tier that generally represents those employees that were not previously enrolled in CalPERS and were hired by the city after 2012. It's interesting to note that for the first time, PAPRA employees now makes up over half the workforce. And the impact that this has on the budget is it results in a lower normal cost that the city has to pay for these pension-related costs, which allows us to redirect those funds towards paying down the pension liability. Newport Beach has committed to an aggressive pension pay down strategy, so the proposed budget includes a $40 million allocation in the baseline budget that's allocated towards paying down the pension liability. It's recommended that an additional $5 million be added as a supplemental appropriation at the time of budget adoption. The current projection shows the pension liability will be eliminated roughly in the next nine years, assuming the city continues to pay $45 million annually and assuming that CalPERS, on average at least, earns 6.8% each year. To recap, the budget is balanced and provides funding to maintain and enhance vital programs while maintaining an aggressive pension pay down strategy. The budget also includes funding to address long-term capital needs. And this concludes our presentation. We're available if you have any questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions at this time?
Just echo your comments that you're going to make already, I'm sure. Well, I'll let you do it.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank the Finance Committee for your hard work and dedication on this and obviously to staff. I think it doesn't go unnoticed that the City of Newport Beach is in such a strong financial position, not only because of the work here, but the work that's been done before us and that will continue. So I love to see these numbers.
Councilmember Grant?
I would just say, I thought what you were going to say, Mayor, was that there's going to be a council eight or 10 years out that's going to say, hey, we're paid off. So while we will have at some point quite a bit of budget surplus, we will also have a council that will be able to announce that we are fully funded. And that's in not just large part, entire part to the hard work of our staff and to you as mayor several times and the councils that have come before us. So it's greatly appreciated and doesn't go unnoticed.
Yeah. That is what I was saying. When it's paid off, the unfunded pension liability amount that we pay now will now be part of the budget. I bet, yeah. I've joked at Finance Committee meetings, I might have to run for that council. All right. Councilmember Wigan?
Yeah, just on the page that was proposed additional staffing and the decrease in that preschool. What, is that over at Newport Coast or is that reduced preschool program staff expenditures? Is that, that's a staff member? Sorry, Sean.
Sean came up to explain that, provide a little more context.
We'll send him the furthest part of.
How in the world, how in the world were you more formal for a pickleball opening than a council meeting?
He was playing pickleball.
So that's, we have a part-time preschool program that's actually at Mariners and Newport Coast in the mornings. So we have, it's being done with contractors and other locations, so we're going to move that completely. And we're still going to run it as a camp in the summer. So we're giving back those part-time hours to the budget.
Got it, because I think preschool is now mandatory, right? Through the state?
Well, it's not licensed preschool. Well, it's not licensed preschool, so it's really just a program where you learn your ABCs, one, two, threes, for the most part, and get used to the flow of how school works, but it's not a licensed preschool.
Gotcha, gotcha. So we just kind of saw that it wasn't as productive as it could have been?
Yeah, it can be done by a contractor, and it's really hard to get staff for that as well. So that's another piece of the puzzle. But the numbers had kind of decreased over the years, and we're doing it other places with contractors, so that we thought that was the right way to go.
Cool, thanks. Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Looking at that chart over the 14-year period, it's instructive to see the ups and downs and how far down we got, and then this fight to kind of get back. And then, of course, it illustrates what the future will likely hold is just more of the up and downness of it. And it certainly are where we are now and where we're headed is the finance committee under the chairmanship of Mr. O'Neill over the last six years?
Yeah.
Is extraordinary. That sort of leadership, that sort of conservative approach, that's what we're going to need going forward to continue to, to continue to get the city through these tough spots that will inevitably happen. And so I just hope that, you know, whoever fills in has that intelligence and desire to really safeguard what's going on with our budget. And of course, the backing of the finance committee, because it's such a big responsibility to make those calls and to sometimes withhold dollars and, you know, just keep the whole system well lubricated with money to at least do all the services that the public deserves in this town for their tax dollars. Really, really important. And so I'm just, I feel very fortunate to have been on council during this period because it wouldn't be much fun at all, because we know what's going on in some of these cities in Orange County. Won't name names, but it's not a pretty scene. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Brad. I appreciate that. Yeah, so July 1st, Mayor Protam, Joe Stapleton takes over his chair, so good luck to you. No, this is, anyway, I have a few comments, but I'll wait. So we also have two of our finance committee members here. You are welcome to speak. You don't have to, but the floor will be yours.
Hi, Nancy Scarborough. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. As a member of the finance committee, I've just really enjoyed this. This is such a rewarding experience. It's a great way to learn about the city. I appreciate the direction and leadership of Mayor O'Neill and our previous mayors and people who've kind of laid the groundwork for this. A lot of community members probably do not understand how the unfunded pension liability works, and I regularly receive comments about why are we spending all this money on unfunded liability? I want a new blah. And so it's hard to understand, but I am so proud to have been a part of this, and I think that we have set a good example and are running in a good direction. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so why don't we, why don't we go out to public comments at this time? Do we have any public comments on this? Since we have almost, we don't really have many members of the public here, and this is a pretty meaty topic. I'll give Jim four minutes instead of three, unless you think you need more than that. All right, we'll go four. All right, go ahead, Jim.
I don't think I need that time.
Okay. I'm being generous today.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser, and the opinions I'm going to express are mine alone. First of all, at its recent meeting, the finance committee understood that the budget, when it is adopted, is going to include some performance, the departmental goals and performance metrics. And since we did not hear about them today, I'm curious if that is going to be part of the discussion when the budget is actually adopted on June 14th, or if that's simply going to be slipped in as filler material as sometimes is added to the adopted budget. Second comment I had is that the budget itself is, of course, made up of details. I happen to have one of the few printed copies of that budget detail, which I think may be actually more detailed than the adopted budget. Sometimes this is compressed in that. And so I want to call your attention, just as an example, of how difficult it is for people to understand the budget and some of the notations in it that are not self-evident. I wanted to call attention, as an example, to the library budget, because the library trustees expressed some new interest in this at their last meeting. And one of the things I wanted to call your attention to is that, as with all of the departments, the finance committee is expecting some inflationary increases in expenses during the coming year. So the trustees noticed that the budget for utilities at their central and branch libraries will be going up. However, they also noticed that the budget for purchasing materials for the library is not going up at all, even though obviously the cost of books is going up. So that would seem to be an example of where we actually are cutting back on services if this budget is adopted. And then speaking of utilities and trying to understand the detail, if they had seen this, which they actually did not, they would also be curious of certain anomalies that are in this. They would notice, for instance, the central library has a budget, and speaking of utilities, for gas, electricity, and water. Yet the Mariners branch ironically has no budget at all for water, yet it's closed this week to correct a plumbing problem that might lead to a water leak. So I think they do have water. And then again, if they looked at the budget for the Balboa branch, it only has a budget for water, none for electricity. But the last time I was there, they did have lights. So the budget is very difficult to understand why things are placed where they are, and it's especially difficult to understand what are called the internal service funds, why some things are regarded as internal service funds and some are not. And the trustees noticed the large charge that they will be expected to pay for those and trying to understand what that is and why things are wrapped into that. Staff could not well explain that. I could not explain it either, and matter of fact, my attempt to explain it was incorrect. So those funds remain a mystery to me and why they're accounted the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, bringing it back. As a matter of process, just so people know, the next step will be a finance committee meeting at 3 o'clock on Thursday, where the finance committee will meet to do its core function, which is to make a recommendation to the full council. And then at our next meeting, first meeting in June, we'll be bringing this forward for discussion and hopefully adoption. If for some reason we don't adopt the budget in the first meeting in June, we'll need to adopt it by the second meeting in June. Fortunately, that has never happened, but that's the process. I'll probably speak a little bit more about my thoughts on the overall budget at that time. But before we conclude with this portion of the study session, I'd like to say thank you to our citizen members of the finance committee. Thank you for giving up your time and volunteering for this. That goes for our two that are on trips right now and unable to be here today. I'd also like to say thank you to Councilmember Blom and Mayor Protam Stapleton for their service on the finance committee as well. And I appreciate the years where we have a very uncontroversial budget. My suspicion is that all of our department heads out in the audience do too, so you're welcome. Anyway, I do say that, though, only from the perspective that it is kind of amazing, and I suspect Councilmember Avery will agree with me, that the difference between this budget cycle and the one that we had during 2020, and then even 21, was a bit of chaos for everyone involved. So seeing it smoothing out now is pretty amazing. Anyway, thank you, Jason. Thank you to Grace for presenting a budget that seems to be headed toward adoption. So this is great. All right, we're going to move now into, you know, actually, we'll go ahead and do, we don't have to do the adjournment, because we're just going to roll right into the, roll right into the next study session item. But before I do that, because it is agendized, I'll go ahead with public comments on non-agenda items. And we'll probably do that, we may, we may end up doing that twice just because of the way it's agendized. But if we have public comments on non-agenda items, now would be a good time to do so. All right, we're going to roll in then into the study session for the regular meeting. Do I need to do another roll call on this, or are we good?
I'll just do it, since it's for just council, all council members are present.
Thank you. All right.
If you could, Mr. Mayor, I did want to, at the onset, go ahead and just identify.
So we're not quite, not quite to the conflicts yet. We need to do the clarification of items on the consent calendar. Do we have any clarification of items on the consent calendar? Councilmember Kleiman?
I have none.
Councilmember Blom?
None.
Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
Councilmember Wigan?
None.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Mayor Protam?
None.
And I have none. All right, we're going to move into study session item number two, the review of the proposed fiscal year 24, 25 capital improvement program budget. Before we do that, do we have any conflicts to declare?
Mayor, I have to recuse myself on the Balboa Island water main replacement and Shorecliffs Water System improvements, as well as the landscape enhancement program for East Coast Highway due to the proximity to my personal residence.
All right, give me just a moment, so that when those come up, I know to stop. All right, Councilmember Blom?
You ready for this?
No. Okay, go ahead.
I have conflicts on number one, Assessment District 124, number two, Balboa Island Water Main Replacement and Shorecliffs Water System Improvements, number three, Balboa Island Drainage and Pump Station Improvements, and number four, West Irvine Terrace Main Water Replacements due to a real property conflict on 224 Marine. I have a conflict on the Peninsula Tide Gate Improvement Project due to real property on 417 and 50130th, and I have a conflict on Assessment District 120 and Santa Ana Avenue and San Bernardino Avenue Streets and Drainage due to real property in 2902 and West Coast Highway.
Okay, as we've done in, oh, I'm sorry, anyone else? Okay. As we've done in past years, we'll go through the discussion. If we would like to, if any council member would like to stop and discuss a specific project, please go ahead and do so. If it is one of the ones that someone has a conflict on, I'll need to pause the meeting, have that council member go into the back, and then we can restart the conversation. So, but just go ahead and let me know by either hand or even frankly, just go ahead and ask your question during this, because it's a longer, longer presentation. All right, let's go ahead with staff presentation on this.
Well, great. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, and tonight we also have Jim Houlihan, your Deputy Director of Public Works and City Engineer. Going through the kind of final review of your capital program, you have that. We've spent a lot of time, as you know, starting back at your planning session, going through many various meetings, and tonight Jim's going to go through kind of what we see as your final proposed budget before you adopt that, and we'll be able to take any questions. I'm going to turn over to Jim to go through the project.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill, city council members. We'll jump right in. Our capital improvement program sets the priorities and appropriates funds for our projects throughout the city, provides the basis for project planning and identifies potential conflicts. It allows for development and construction of identified public improvements, and it addresses significant maintenance projects. And lastly, it responds to the changing priorities and conditions throughout the So recap of this, this current year, we completed 31 projects as of the end of June. We'll complete total value $46 million, and we have another 19 projects in construction right now valued at about $82 million. The list there, some of the more significant ones, biggest being the library lecture hall shown there. This list is the 31 projects that were completed this fiscal year. Some of the notable ones, Royal Park Rehab, the Balboa Boulevard, the End Section Payment Rehab, Junior Lifeguard, in a couple of weeks, will be there, Newport Coast Drive, and the Newport Coast Pickleball that the mayor just mentioned earlier.
So, sorry, just go back for a second. I don't want to gloss over this. I recognize how incredibly busy Public Works has been this past year and do want to express my appreciation for maintaining it at a really high level. So this is, this is a big deal, this, this many projects being completed in one year. And I know this coming year is no joke either, but I just wanted to stop for a second and just express appreciation. I'm sure everyone up here would do the same. So let's go ahead.
So this coming year, the proposed 24, 25 CIP includes 67 items in our program. Total about $90 million of that, 50, roughly 56 million in new funding. And those were, in our early look, we went through those projects, specifically the projects that were proposed to have new funding. In addition, about $34 million in rebudget, and some of the larger rebudgets are listed there below, including work out at the city yard and on Balboa Island coming up in the next few years. This is our summary of our budget by category. As you can see, the three big ones there are facilities, streets and drainage, and parks, harbors, and beaches. They make up over 75% of the total CIP budget. And a note on the bottom, I know some of the public previously had wanted more detail as I go through this. So you can find that on our website under the Public Works section of the website. There's a, the proposed CIP is listed and shown there. And it has each project, it shows the funding, where the funds coming from, it shows the summary of the project, and some of the past work that has been done as well. Jumping into the various categories, I'll just touch on a couple of projects as I go through. In the facilities section, a little over $22 million, and the big one there is the Balboa Branch Library Fire Station 1. And coming out of the last meeting recently, we're going to move into final design and with some of the direction that you provided.
And Jim, you're going to start 15th Street relatively soon, right? That's another.
Yeah, really, the outreach portion, we've got to do some, we're waiting on some concepts on the separated boardwalk, and we'll present that as well with the 15th Street, since it's in that vicinity, that area. So on the streets and drainage, we have a little, approximately $33 million in projects there. About 25 projects, so this section is more than a third of all the projects that we're doing. Notably on this page here is the Balboa Boulevard, Newport Boulevard, 32nd Street Payment Rehab. We'll be starting some of this near the school this summer. We've got a little bit of work before school opens, and then we'll, we'll fall back and once summer's over, we'll start, start moving on the grinding and overlay, pavement rehab all through, from Coast Highway basically, to, to the latest project we did at 12th Here's additional projects, MacArthur Boulevard being one of the bigger ones. We're going to be looking to add medians there and beautify that section in the airport area. We're in the design phase now, and we'll be looking to go into construction next summer on that project. Some of, here's some of our other streets and payment rehab and improvement programs. And some of the other large street projects, Superior Avenue, where we're building the bridge now, we'll be improving that from Coast Highway up to Hospital, and then some work on Hospital, and then also in the airport area on Von Karman. In the transportation category, about $2.5 million budget in that. And the larger item is the traffic signal rehab, and will be focused on the airport area, as well as, like I mentioned, some of the payment projects as well. The water quality and environmental, about $5.4 million. The largest and most significant one is Big Canyon Restoration Phase 3. On that one, we are waiting for approval of some additional grants and likely. On that one, we are waiting for approval of some additional grants, and likely slated for start next summer. We're working with the Fish and Wildlife Service on that, and most of it is their In the parks, harbors, and beaches, about $14.5 million. Park section, we're doing a lot of work in the parks, thanks for the additional funding on the maintenance side. On the harbor and beaches, we're working on, we'll be moving towards some of the design on the, on the walls, but we'll focus right initially on the ferry area and with what's going on with the ferry. We just wanna hone in on what's needed to help their service as well. So we're, we're working on that as in the design side. Additionally, we'll be replacing a lot of the harbor floats, the public floats within the harbor. About nine or 10 of those will be upgraded, so that'll be a large project, starting later this summer and the fall. And the Newport Pier, McFadden Square, really getting into the outreach. It's been slow-going, but we'll get out there and we'll, we'll get those stakeholders, yes, I know. On the water side, about $8 million, the large project being the bay crossings for water and sewers. And I mentioned before that we were able to get a great product, it's a liner, that will allow us to line the pipes instead of removing them and replacing them. And recently, we had a break, we put a liner in, it's performing excellent. So we're really happy, it's gonna save money, and it's accelerating the project. Additional projects in the water category, one of the significant ones is upgrading a few of our pump stations in the, some of the zones at the Big Canyon Reservoir, Zones 3 and 4. Waste water section, we've, most of the money there is falling in our main lining, sewer main lining and repair, and we've got some work on the peninsula in the Lido area, Via Lido, and, and we also have a little bit of work down in CDM that we need to do, crossing some of the, the canyons there. And in our miscellaneous section, a lot of work on oil wells. Mark's group is getting out there and continued, keep those running, as well as work, we're continuing to work on our fleet electricization program. We have a consultant on board right now that we're working with to look at our city facilities for that effort. And this is a recap, what was shown earlier. Again, public can find this on our website, on the city's website, under the Public Works tab. And lastly, is a slide showing by fund where the funds coming from for our CIP. About half of the funding is Tides, Thailand, General Fund, and FFP. That's approximately half of that, of the budget of the CIP, both rebudget and new budget. With that.
That concludes our presentation, and again, I'd like to thank council for all your support. You guys are just great, having a great council that understands infrastructure and supports it, which is the foundation of our city. I also really wanna shout out to Teresa Shwayt, she's our finance and administrative manager putting this program together, and I'm more amazed at her, because she was telling me we have about 40% of the entire city budget goes through her office, there's so much going, it's like invoices galore. So I'm just thankful that she's there to pay in this, but thank you for your support, and we're here for any questions.
Any, any questions up here? No? Who had to public comment on this? Do we have any public comments on the CIP study session item?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I'm not quite sure where the public is expected to offer suggestions for things that could be in this or a future capital improvement program, but are not there yet. If I were asked to make a suggestion, one I might make, as I recently became aware that one of the premier harbor viewing spots that the city claims to have in its general plan, diagram of viewpoints in the city, is a little street end on Bayside Drive, in an area where there are no viewpoints. Driving down there, you go past the Harbor Patrol, and you go around a sharp curve that goes up by Begonia Park, and there's a street end there that goes out to the harbor, and is one of the few harbor viewing points. And it currently is all striped red, so there is no parking for the public to use that. And there actually is a, in theory, public tideline speech below that with no access to that, and so if the city was interested in making access improvements, that would be a good one to make. The other comment I have about the present budget is, and again, the opinions are my own, but I am a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I believe the council a few months ago had an item that indicated that this, and oddly, the funding for that project is in the capital improvement program, and I think you had an item a few months ago indicating the spending was going faster than had been anticipated. And the current CIP budget is showing a rebudget of money from the previous year, it's not anticipating any more money being added in the future years, so I'm wondering if we have enough money in that to successfully complete the general plan update. And additionally, as a member of the Noise Element Subcommittee, it was not anticipated that we needed to work on the noise element, but I think we do, and residents of Newport Beach are concerned about noise in Newport Beach, and I don't think any money was anticipated to be spent on that. So that might need looking at as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, bring it back. So Grace, on the question he was asking about having sufficient money to complete the general plan update, I assume the answer is yes, but I wanted to just double-check.
Just taking a quick look over at Simone, and he's nodding his head, and I know we had put money in this last year, and I think there's quite a bit of carryover funds that are gonna be, so we didn't need to, we didn't feel the need to put additional money at this time.
Makes sense. All right, any other discussion up here? All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, we'll move into study session item number three, Public Safety Technology Ad Hoc Committee results. This, this was an ad hoc committee formed that included Councilmember Kleiman, Mayor Protem, Stapleton, and me, and so appreciate Police Chief coming forward and talking about some of the items that we discussed, and would like to see implemented going forward.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Chief of Police Joe Carr, right to my right, Deputy Chief of Police Javier Aguilar. Just by way of background, prior council directed the formation of an ad hoc to look into theft and residential burglaries. Was made up of three community members who researched best practices in the law enforcement space and different systems and technologies being used by other police departments in our region. They returned back to report to council on those items, at which time this council formed this current ad hoc to look into these public safety best practices, and these are the results of that work. Basically, we got to start with the first question, why are we doing this? Information drives our decision-making, we have real-time information, better resource allocation and response, and more accurate and timely information leads to better results. The amount of technology in the last five to 10 years that has developed in law enforcement is really staggering. Between the two of us, both being in this profession 25 years, when we started, if you would've told us that we would have an alert system that would tell us when a criminal was coming into our city and where they were, we wouldn't believe it. And nowadays, going to a crime and just getting a basic description from the best witness you can find, now we're actually to the point where we might actually have a picture of the exact vehicle and the exact person we're looking for. Moving on, this is also a time saver, it helps us develop timely investigative leads from archived video and photographs, and it decreases staff time significantly, where officers and detectives can immediately start working on these cases and not have to start from the ground up and take days, weeks, or even months to work a case forward. Ultimately, will increase our crime prevention, our criminal apprehensions, and our property recovery. But the main point is it does, it really deters criminal offenders. We know anecdotally from talking to task force members, these criminal groups talk to each other, they communicate on where to go to commit these crimes, and these systems I'm about to present are areas that they avoid. They say, don't go to that city, they've got all the bells and whistles, go to the city, they don't have any of that stuff. So basically, I'd like it to become that Newport Beach is a place that they do not wanna frequent. So the proposed technology platforms, first being the Crime Information Center, also known as a Real-Time Crime Center, the Flock Cameras ALPR System, the FUSIS Intelligence Platform, and then we are currently looking into possibly developing a drone program. So the Crime Information System, our center rather, is a two-part mission. It works in a real-time sense to where investigations will begin immediately. We will have a civilian investigator in with dispatch, so as the call comes in, they will get those leads, photographs, video, and immediately start pushing that out to responding patrol officers, who, as I said before, may have a picture of a suspect in a vehicle before they even get to the call. That way, they're not looking at 20 different red cars, they know exactly which red car they're looking for. Suspect and vehicle descriptions provided to field units as soon as possible, and then on the flip side, when it's not being used in a real-time sense, we will use our crime analysis team to analyze the multiple data sets to predict and prevent crime, and that will enforce or direct our enforcement operations out in the field, which I will get into, but basically, they'll analyze the dates, times, and locations that are most frequent in by these criminals, and we will have a team go into those areas during those dates and times to try and suppress that activity. The Crime Information Center has three major components, the technology, the staffing, and the field operations element. So in technology, we have the Flock, FUSIS, potential drone program, and the different various law enforcement databases we already use. The staffing will be our current senior crime analyst, and the three new civilian investigators that were mentioned in the prior presentations. And then the field operations will be an existing full-time sergeant and four existing police officers. So Flock Cameras are automated license plate readers, and they will be at fixed locations on the inbound and outbound thoroughfares and gateways to the city. As a service, there's an installation fee and a set annual cost per unit, and it uses cellular data and is solar-powered, and access to national hotlisting is what we're really hoping to get, and that basically is any law enforcement agency in the country that wants to enter a vehicle, vehicle license plate or description into the Flock system, that will alert us if that vehicle ever comes into our city. There is the cost for the first year and annual thereafter, and we're proposing 70 locations in the city, and that will cover all the major arteries, and that takes into account the Flock system that currently exists at Costa Mesa, so we didn't have any redundancies So how does it work? So real-time alerts to our law enforcement when a stolen vehicle or a fugitive vehicle is detected in the city. It also works for amber and silver alerts. It also provides investigative critical information to get the actionable leads resulting in quick apprehensions, the recovery of stolen property, missing and endangered persons, and crucial evidence. It also acts as a visual deterrent. This is what we get with Flock, it's indiscriminate evidence from fixed locations, it does not take pictures of people, it has no facial recognition, and it's not used for traffic enforcement. These are not cameras we will be sitting and watching all day, they will simply go off when a criminal offender is entering the city. From a privacy standpoint, the footage is owned by us, stored at Flock, it's only a 30-day retention, and then it's deleted, and that ensures that anything that's not involved in a crime is overwritten, and it takes the human bias out of crime solving. All data is secure in a cloud, the search reason is required, so officers can't just pull up a camera and look for a car, they have to have a reason, and they have to enter that into the system. Again, no facial recognition, no predictive policing, no personal identifiable information, no traffic enforcement, and then also, there's a transparency portal that will be on our website, so people will be able to see how many cars passed by Flock Cameras, how many hotlist hits there were, and just, for Costa Mesa, in the last 30 days, I looked up their numbers, their Flock Cameras, they have about 30 or 35, they picked up 1.3 million vehicles, but among those, a little over 5,000 were hot-listed vehicles. So that's the amount of leads and awareness that we will have as a police department. Nationally, and this is more of a proof of concept, this company's been around since 2014, there's currently 4,000 cities and 42 states involved in the program, there's 11,800 cameras in California, and just south of, everything south of Santa Monica, there's 2,300 cameras and 48 participating agencies, so we will be joining those groups. The next platform in the Crime Information Center is FUSIS. I'm about to play a two-and-a-half-minute video that kind of explains it better than I could.
Welcome to FUSIS, the industry's first cloud-based, rapidly deployable, real-time crime center. FUSIS integrates all major public safety technology investments into a single pane of glass, synthesizing real-time intelligence to enhance first responders' situational awareness and decision-making capabilities. Community-owned cameras are combined with video management software, drones, departmentally-issued cell phones, gunshot detection systems, and license plate readers. All this information is integrated with the department's 911 dispatch software via a rules-based engine designed to ensure the real-time crime center lives in the hands of agency crime analysts and its field-based users. FUSIS brings intelligence to the field by operationalizing video. Officer locations in relation to a call for service, live video to and from their mobile devices, encrypted chat channels, embedded floor plans, and suspect video sent directly to responding officers contribute to the agency's capacity for critical incident management. Setting up FUSIS is fast, requires minimal hardware, and has no activation fees. You simply plug a FUSIS core into your existing camera or network, and within seconds, the video feed is analyzed, securely encrypted, and transmitted either by an ongoing livestream or on-demand based on an alert. FUSIS AI at-the-edge technology efficiently analyzes video right at the camera, saving precious moments by delivering an automated media payload based on the call for service. And unlike other systems, video and alert sharing is completely controlled by the donor location. For example, schools may choose to limit video sharing to emergency situations, like an active shooter event, and the camera itself can be shared based on the priority of the call and associated sharing policy. In an investigation, police can automatically request footage from all nearby businesses at the click of a button, and camera owners can securely share recorded, as well as live video feeds, to aid in the investigation. Incident video and data is stored in a SIGIS-compliant vault for investigators. An additional video evidence is easily collected via a pre-configured camera registry map of all the public and private cameras in your region, along with a multimedia tip-line for the public. The FUSIS Real-Time Crime Center in the cloud is a mission-critical hub that enhances the situational awareness and investigative capabilities of law enforcement agencies, keeping officers and community members safer.
In terms of time saved and salary savings, that process of reaching out to a business owner and requesting video is something that we have to do that's labor-intensive. We have to call them well after the fact, or go see them, try to retrieve that video. This allows them to give us permission beforehand, as long as they wanna be part of the program, we'll be able to access that immediately. So this is what it will look like in the Crime Information Center. So when a call comes up, you can see the calls listed below. The video paints at the top, this particular example is an undergraduate university in another state. So if we get a call of a violent crime happening at a school, or Fashion Island, or at a business, those cameras, we will not be watching them 24/7. What'll happen is that crime call comes out, we're able to click on it, and as long as we have the permission of that video surveillance owner, we're able to pull up the five closest cameras to that crime. So for my staff, it's very important, because if they're going to a school or Fashion Island, they're going by the best description given by the best witness they can find, and sometimes that takes time to get to where the suspect is. In this instance, we can immediately pull up those cameras and know exactly where we're heading, and maybe exactly who we're looking for. The FUSIS One Intelligence Platform, that integrates all The FUSIS one-intelligence platform integrates all of our systems into one system. That includes Evidence.com, our computer-aided dispatch and records management, and Flock, and allows the seamless integration of private institutional and government video surveillance. And FUSIS works directly with private parties to integrate the video at a cost of $100,000 per year. And it combines the private and public video streams into a single feed, and it gives us an ecosystem that combines a video with other data utilities like the floor pans, the body cameras, and things like that, enables a greater situational awareness and officer safety, and a common operating procedure. Just gives us a better picture of what's going on in real time. From a privacy standpoint, the video owners determine who, when, where, and why the video streams are reviewed and can limit the accesses they choose. This is just a partnership between us and the business or us and the resident. So our watch commanders, dispatchers, and officers have access to owner-approved live video feeds if they should choose to give it to us. Now, moving on, we're currently looking at possibly developing a drone program at the direction of the ad hoc. It's an American drone manufacturer's requirement that provides training, a specific drone program designed for this city and this footprint, that provide maintenance and operational support. Some of the challenges we will have is it's controlled airspace near John Wayne, so we would need to work with the FAA to get some waivers to operate those, train our personnel to operate the aircraft, and of course, register them with the FAA. And policy being the most important part of it, there needs to be a specific and authorized use of drones. We would probably use them very similarly to how we use the Huntington Beach helicopter. We wouldn't use them for patrolling purposes or random surveillance. They would be criminal investigation-specific or a community caretaking event such as a fire or search and rescue. We will have a list of prohibited uses and of course, how and when we would record. The only pending issue tonight probably to discuss is Resolution Number 2023-040, which expires September 20th, was the Flock Camera HOA Pilot Program. We currently have two communities registered with that program, so the consideration in front of you would be to extend that beyond September 20th or to make it permanent. And we did have recent success, at least with Spyglass, of a package thief, and one of their Flock cameras picked up the vehicle, and within hours, we were able to locate that subject at a motel in Santa Ana and linked him to at least 30 other separate package thefts in other cities. And that completes the presentation.
Great. Thank you. Real quick, a couple of things. The first on my end, just wanted to highlight for folks, one of the things that matters to me are making sure that we have policies in place, given the amount of additional data that we're going to be collecting as part of these programs. So we've actually worked up, as a subcommittee, we've worked up a drone policy that will be implemented once we actually have a drone program. And then we're working right now on a policy dealing with the Flock cameras as well. I'm going to come back around on this, but I am going to be advocating for the, I'm going to be advocating for us to make permanent the HOA program. We made it open to much more than just two HOAs, but we've only had two come in on it. They've both been successful. I've heard from the HOA leadership in Spyglass, they have been very pleased with the responsiveness and are very pleased with the recent success. And so I am going to advocate for us to make that permanent. We'll need to do a straw poll at the end of the study session on this item, but I wanted to make those comments. Mr. Wagon, I know you're up front, but because we've got a couple of subcommittee members, I wanted to make sure they got the opportunity to speak first, so I will come back to you. I will start with Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you, Mayor. I first just want to extend my gratitude to the department for all the time and research done to put this proposal together. A special thank you actually to Lieutenant Marouse, who schlepped us all, the three of us, down to Beverly Hills so that we could see the Crime Center, Real-Time Crime Center in action and see what they're doing firsthand. I think we all know that we have the best of the best personnel out there. We're already doing some fantastic work with proactive patrols and policing and a lot of great deterrents. So I just want to say I'm all-in on giving our department the additional tools that they need to continue to keep this city as safe as it is. That's really all I wanted to say at this point. I may have more comments later.
Thank you, Councilmember Stapleton, then Councilmember Wagon.
Yeah, I would just say Councilwoman Kleiman hit the nail on the head. I mean, we have the best of the best, so it's time that we give you the best of the best when it comes to the technology and resources that you guys need. And thank you for that tour in Beverly Hills. That's where my mind got going on all of this, when you talk about a real-time crime center, the Crime Information Center that we're talking about. I mean, watching them in the middle of Los Angeles, everything going around them and all the impacts and what it takes to run that police department, from the drone program to the cameras and everything else. But I'm all-in on this. I think when you look at our responsibility as elected officials here in a city like Newport Beach, it's, you know, at the top, it's to protect our residents. And I think giving you guys the tools and resources that you need. And when you look at something like the Flock camera system, we don't have to look further outside of our own city when we've been able to solve crime through other Flock systems that are neighboring communities that weren't our own system, but something that we're able to solve crime that could potentially be a cold case going forward. So I'm all-in on that. Yeah, and I would just say it's good to have two attorneys on the committee because I think when you look at the policy work, that's going to be important, and I know you guys will be good stewards of that. So I appreciate the work that's been done on that. So those are my comments.
Councilmember Wagon.
Yeah, thank you to the ad hoc for their hard work, and thank you for you guys every day doing what you do. We appreciate it here. As far as, you know, kind of a priority list of those four items, do you have a 1 through 4? Are they kind of all equally blended into, you know, the grand scope of how this all integrates? But, you know, just kind of if you could prioritize, you know, the ones that you think are the most important.
Chief, could you do me a favor and go back to the slide that has, if we had, I can't remember if there was a slide that had the whole listings.
And how do you say that one again? The F-U-C-U-S? FUSIS? I would want to say the wrong thing, that one. Seems pretty close to saying something wrong.
Right. So they all work in concert. The drone program is probably that last piece that would really put a polish on everything and help us in the operational sense. But for the Crime Information Center to operate at full capacity, we would want the Flock cameras and the FUSIS program to pull it all in. But yeah, it's all basically one thing.
The FUSIS intelligence platform, can that tap into rings and nests of private homeowners as well?
Yes.
I think that's a pretty cool feature that I think our residents, I know that it will be a challenge, but I think using our communications platforms, we can alert the residents saying, hey, we have this new tool. Sign up. It would, I think with our technology, we already have, be pretty...
Right. And we're already doing that with Ring cameras, where they've registered them with us, and we can get that video from them.
It just will make it more seamless and easier. Since we have a new deputy chief, Aguilar, I'm going to pull you out to make some comments. You come from another department, and I think that's valuable to us because, you know, we see things all internally, but you come from another agency. Do you, you seen in Pasadena any of these being used? And if you have, are we kind of lacking here by not having them? Do you see any areas? And it's hard, you're sitting next to your boss here, to say, I see some inefficiencies. But, you know, it's nice to have an outside perspective sometimes to tell us, well, here we have an opportunity. And then this is a good opportunity to let our residents know that these investments will be beneficial, and these may be expensive, but you see it from another department and or another agency and now coming over to here. So just maybe if you had just a few comments to add to that, that would maybe be helpful to us to make our determinations.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Good evening. What the chief said is absolutely correct. Criminals do speak, and they target cities that do not have the technology. It's easier for them to commit crimes. I've been part of major investigations where we're on wiretaps, and we would hear criminals talk exactly just that. They know this technology just as well as police does. I've always said, people who know technology very well when it comes to crime prevention are police officers and criminals. So this is something that we in this city have to have. I think it's, I'm very happy that the chief is pushing for this type of technology, and it's a must. It's a huge deterrent. I think that's the number-one step to any prevention of crime. And then if they do want to commit those crimes, we'll have the technology to get them. But it's not just for crime prevention. I think the other part that we have to keep in mind is that it's also a public safety in regards... That it went off. In regards to saving lives, I think there's a lot of issues sometimes with alerts and other types of alerts in the state that people are driving around, don't realize where they are, and these are the things that we save somebody one day because there's a hit. It's a twofold, and I think that's something we have to keep in mind.
Great. I think every one of my colleagues here believe in public safety being the number-one priority. So I really appreciate this ad hoc sitting down, finding out these essential aspects of building upon a great department. So thank you, and I do echo the comments that Mayor O'Neill made about the permanent use of the Flock. I would love to see the Flock get turned on citywide tomorrow, but obviously, we've got a few things we have to do to make that come to fruition, but as far as the HOAs, I really do like that.
Got it. Thank you. Two quick things on that. One of them is, just wanted to note that what Councilmember Wagon was asking about having access, I know he referenced it, the residents need to opt-in on that, so just enough, they won't be able to reach in and grab your footage without your permission. The other one is, this is probably a city manager question. So we were talking about drone development program, drone program development. We don't have that quite yet, but on the first three items up here, the CIC, Flock cameras, and FUSIS intelligent platform, some of this is in the anticipated budget. It's just we, you know, we need to actually have contracts for them, which will come to us for approval. But I just wanted to point out that as we're working through this, we're actually, as part of the subcommittee's work, has given the council the option in the budget cycle to actually implement this in the next fiscal year. So just wanted you to talk to that for just a second.
Yes, we have actually all three of those first three items in the proposed budget. So the funding will be available starting July 1st for these programs, which will take about that amount of time at this point right now to finish up doing the contracts and all that development, but we'll be ready to go.
All right. So Chief, in the budget we were just talking about earlier in the study session, one of the proposed augmentations for staff is adding three civilians into the police department. I was wondering if you could speak to that, given what we're talking about here.
Certainly. So those three will staff the crime center in dispatch, so we'll have it covered seven days a week during peak hours. And that's actually a more inexpensive way than putting a full-time police officer there. This person will be basically receiving the intelligence and putting it out over the radio as opposed to working backwards and assigning it to a detective.
Yeah. So I didn't want, I didn't want councilmembers not on the committee to be wondering, so I wanted to make sure that you all understood that adopting this budget does not mean we are implementing everything in there. We still have to make the decisions, but it does provide the flexibility to know that the money is there if we decide to actually move forward with this. All right. Seeing no one else asking to speak, let's go out to public comment on this study session item. Any public comment on this study session item?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. In the lobby, I noticed you received a number of emails about drones, and I was curious when I saw those, how the people writing these knew that the presentation was going to be about drones because it didn't say anything about that on the agenda. Reading these more carefully, I don't think they're actually about this agenda item, even though they were notated as being that. I think they're a non-agenda request for the city council to adopt a drone program in general for private drones rather than the police ones. That said, what we heard today sounds wonderful as a crime-fighting tool. And I heard that the council would be considering policies governing the Flock cameras that would be acquired for this and the drones. But from the presentation, it sounded like the Crime Information Center with its FUSIS platform is going to have a wider reach than that. It will be drawing other cameras that are not part of the Flock camera system. It will be drawing all sorts of other information, and I think other things will be added to that over the future. And so in addition to being used for crime fighting, which we're promised is the only thing it's going to be used for, there is a risk of it being used to monitor and track residents simply going about their daily lives, which I don't think in this country is something we want to do. So I would suggest rather than two separate policies, perhaps we need a overarching policy that this technology will not be misused in all its possible aspects rather than just the cameras and the drones. And perhaps the drone policy is the one that the people are asking for here rather than the police one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Adam Levens. I wonder if the chief would share with us if there's been any analysis on what 70 automatic license plate reader cameras, if there would be any staffing levels up or down? Like, I firmly believe that one of the best deterrents as a patrol officer, being in the area 24/7 as far as deterrent, public relations value, and then response time. And I'm just curious if you anticipate any staffing level changes with the implementation of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Coming back around, I guess as a council member, I don't anticipate you giving up any police officers in response to this. I see this as more of an addition, not a subtraction. But I suppose I would ask you, do you have any intention of asking us for fewer police officers?
No, I do not.
Yeah. I didn't think so. All right. So Mr. Wagon.
Mr. Mosher brought up a good point, but a lot of the systems are private investigators or, you know, divorce attorneys, you know, seeking, you know, to tracking the movement of some of our residents as far as their spouses go. Can we create a policy of some sort, you know, that prevents the over-usage of that or the prevention of the resources that would cause you to slow down, you know, having to supply the data to outside entities, you know? We'd have to research the legalities of that, you know, when it comes to those cameras throughout, because the Flock is obviously something that's not recording, but the other data is something that they're allowing you to have, you know? What limitations do you have? Or would there be a way to send that data out on a personal request? Like, I want to make sure that that's blocked.
Well, first and foremost, we're really ruled by the Fourth Amendment on those issues, unreasonable searches and seizures. We will not be providing data by request. They will have to go through the legal process through a PRA, and that would all come down to what we recorded. And again, we're not going to be recording and holding on to every bit of data 24/7. These are all going to be specifically related to criminal investigations, which most people are not going to have access to.
I just want to make sure that the language kind of covers that so that, you know, that is already without a question covered, and we're not held to that, having to, and that's a lawyer's speak.
No, no, that's fair.
No idea.
Yep. So that's fair. So there's a couple of points that we would cover. One of them is the, so if it's covered by a Public Records Act request, then it would be covered by that. And so the, so part of it is making sure that we're not just collecting data willy-nilly. That's part of the analysis. The other part is, to your point about making sure that we have, you know, proper oversight within the department itself, part of the analysis is also making sure that we have audits of data and how it's being used and collected. That is part of the, that is part of the analysis, or part of the policy that we're looking at and creating. So point well taken. Councilmember Blom.
And just quickly, I'm going to throw my voice behind Councilmember Wagon and Mr. Mosher, is that it's very important to me that we're not opening this up for public records requests and a huge amount of staff time to be utilized to start sifting through data for those types of pieces. You know, I love the idea of crime prevention. I like giving you guys any tools we can to make this one of the safest cities in the world, but I am also nervous about what too much data can do in this country. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Trust me. That's, that one I appreciate a lot. We are, they've already heard me talk about the word "policy" too much, so they'll continue to hear it now, especially now I've got... to hear it now, especially now I've got two councilmembers talking about it. All right. So, thank you very much. This has been great. All right. We're going to go into, let's see, we'll go into public comments on non-agenda items. Before we go to closed session, we have public comments on non-agenda items. All right. So, we were perhaps a little ambitious on our goal of completing all three of those.
Mayor O'Neill, if I may, I apologize. I think we did receive your straw vote on the --
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Could just give a short --
Yep. Let's come back real quickly. So, just need to see straw vote on whether to bring back for permanent adoption the HOA Flock camera program. If you are in favor of it, please raise your hand.
That's unanimous.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. So let's, we were a bit ambitious. The plan was to start the regular meeting at 5:30. It's currently 5:31. So we're going to need to push the regular meeting to 6 o'clock for us to be able to go into closed session. If for some reason we need to continue the closed session after 6 o'clock, we can do so either afterward or continue and start it, but we won't start before 6 o'clock. I do not anticipate any reportable action, but Yolanda, take us into closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council will adjourn into closed session to, with labor negotiators to discuss collective bargaining with the employee organizations that are identified in 4A as well as the unrepresented employees for key end management. All of that is listed in 4A 1 and 4A 2 of the agenda.
All right. Standard recess until 6 o'clock. Thanks.
Councilmember Grant and I have used our own personal resources. There are no city taxpayer dollars associated with this trip, other than a few small gifts that the city was generous enough to allow us to bring, mostly trinkets and a little few mementos. But our expenses for ourselves are personal out of pocket. So I look forward to reporting out that experience and our trip at the next council meeting.
Great. Councilmember Grant.
Just one report. I was able to participate with several of the council members at the Exchange Club of Newport Harbor's Memorial Day Celebration in Castaways Park. And as it is every year, it was a wonderful occasion for our community to come together in a mutual commitment. And I appreciate all the work that this Exchange Club does for our city and our residents. Thank you for allowing me to report.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I had a few opportunities the last couple of weeks. I presented in front of leadership tomorrow in their Government Day class. I know the mayor did as well. That was a great class. Congrats to Terry Moore for another Love Newport success. I went to the opening party festivities here at City Hall. And congrats to our Public Works team, the Touch a Truck event. I mean, good for you guys. I don't think I've seen that much traffic on the peninsula outside of a summer day, maybe ever, but there had to be over 2,000 people. And I'm proud to say it was the first event I got any of my buddies to come to because they've got kids that are between one and four years old. And they were finally like, finally, something we can attend. So congratulations to you guys. I also joined some of my fellow council members for the opening of the pickleball courts. That was phenomenal. Mayor O'Neil and myself got to play in the inaugural event and performed much better than I thought we would. So, good for us. And we played against some PB and art commissioners. So thank you, Sean Levin and your team for putting that together. That was a lot of fun. Congratulations to my fellow Commodores in the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce for the 62nd Athletic Awards. It was a great opportunity to highlight the students from CDM High School, Newport Harbor, and Sage Hill. I think we had 35 student athletes there, all remarkable student athletes, and I was really proud to be a part of that. Went to the Newport Harbor High School for their Memorial Day Ceremony. That was really well received as well. And then I got to go visit the Superior Bridge. So the Sunset Ridge Park, the new bridge in the parking lot's going over there. So kudos to our team. It's coming along very well, and we're hoping to have that complete by September. But that's going to be 129 parking spots and one of my favorite parks in the city. Some incredible ocean views, not only from the park, but also from the parking lot. That'll provide some more beach parking. So kudos to the team for that. And finally, just congrats, Mayor O'Neil. I know you're involved in the Exchange Club and, you know, good work for you and your team for putting that together yesterday at Castaways Park. Always one of my favorite events of the year is to remember those that have served and given it all to protect us here in the U.S. So, thank you.
Thank you. In addition to events already mentioned, I also spoke on a mayor's panel, excuse me, on a mayor's panel for Leadership Tomorrow. I also was present to provide the Mayor's Award for the Balboa Island Art Walk. A few of us were there for the Battle in the Bay between Corona del Mar and Newport Harbor High School water polo teams, both boys and girls. That was played over Marina Park. Laird Hayes, who is a former PB and art commissioner, was driving impetus behind this, did a great job alongside our staff, who made sure it worked out really nicely. And then coming up on Sunday is the Balboa Island Parade, the longest shortest parade in the world, I think. So anyway, I hope folks will come out on Sunday morning. It'll be great. We're going to move into matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda, which is a non-discussion item. The only item up is to request staff to provide an update on the implementation status of the 2014 City of Newport Beach Bicycle Master Plan at a City Council Study Session in the near future, presented by council member, or excuse me, Mayor Protam Stapleton. If you're in support of this, please raise your hand.
That's unanimous, seven zero.
All right. Madam Clerk.
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 16. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right. Councilmembers, do we have any items to pull or to clarify? Councilmember Kleiman?
None for me.
Councilmember Blom?
None.
Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
Councilmember Wagon?
Number seven, please.
Pulling number seven?
Yes.
Okay. Pulling number seven, Councilmember Grant?
None.
Mayor Protam?
I have none.
I have none. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I moved the consent calendar except for item number seven, which was pulled by Councilwoman Wagon and with the amendments to item number one, the minutes.
All right. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar items, one through 16, with item number seven pulled? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. We have a motion, and I'm sorry, I should have waited for a second. We have a motion, and do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Wagon. Let's go ahead and vote.
It's not on the screen.
Comes up for it. Okay. The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
All right. We'll poll with item number seven pulled. Councilmember Wagon, do you want a staff report?
I don't need a staff report. There were some public comments from Mr. Moser that made sense to me. It did look like in the staff report, there was a conversation that said that, looked like 90 consecutive workdays start in July or sooner. The peninsula always is a concern to me when we're doing roadwork down there. It does mention Newport Elementary needing to get those done before the school year. That's 13th, 14th Street, probably the surrounding area, but the map on Attachment A 7-5 has significant distance away from that school. So I'm just, I want to make sure that we don't have a problematic summer down there with irritated visitors and also locals who traverse the area. So maybe just explain a game plan, how that's going to work, so that we're not impacted or certain segments of that can be pushed out maybe into the fall that would be less impactful to the residents.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Wagon. So the plan is, as you know, we try to work around the elementary schools, and this was a more challenging one because you're on the peninsula. So we're going to basically do the portion in front of Newport Elementary, which is 13th, 14th, right, and 12th. They'll come in and do that right away, and then they'll stop, they'll back off, and we'll have our summer, and then they'll come in in September and finish. There's a lot of work right there, but we have to get in when the school's not in. It's too crazy to try to do that when the school's in. So there'll be a little inconvenience, but if we're in, as you know, June, getting, it's still kind of gloomy, it's not too bad. We can probably get in and out without much pain.
Okay, good. So basically, it's just that segment near the school that we'll do early, and then the rest is going to be punted until...
It'll be delayed. We're not doing the whole portion.
Perfect. Okay. Tell me that sounds fine. So I'll make a motion to approve that item.
Seconded by the Mayor Protam. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor O'Neil, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser, and I thank Councilmember Wagon for pulling this item for a little more discussion. I think since these are improvements on Balboa Boulevard, and there was a fatality over the weekend on Balboa Boulevard involving a pedestrian, and we understand that the work near the school, 13th and 14th Street, I believe, the report that the public hasn't seen the actual plan of what you're approving, but the verbiage said that it was pedestrian safety improvements, and so it might be helpful for the public to know what kind of pedestrian safety improvements are proposed at those two intersections and whether it might be more widely applicable along Balboa Boulevard in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Mr. Webb, did you want to comment on what safety enhancements are being contemplated there?
Yes, the safety enhancements will be working on better visibility at the two crosswalks. I believe it's 13th and 12th, where we have the crossing guards. There's flashing beacons there now. The traffic folks are putting in more enhanced beacons. We're not touching the other crosswalks. They've already had safety improvements to it. Unfortunately, the accident we had this weekend was at a signalized intersection, as you know, on Palm and Balboa. I believe it's in the crosswalk. I don't know all the details yet, but this will be a little improvement for the school.
Got it. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion up here? Okay. Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right. Do we have any public comment on agenda or non-agenda items?
My name is George Hilkema. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for 50 years and a boat and mooring permit holder for 34 years. I'm also a Newport Mooring Association Board Member for 30 years. On the May 4th City Council meeting, I attempted to present some thoughts on the mooring fee increases, but I was unable to successfully produce my slide for the screen, and I had two minutes rather than three, so I'd like to give it another go. And the title of my talk is, "Do Some of the Boats in Newport Harbor Pay No Tideland Fee at All?" Today, I was successful in talking to Jennifer, who provided this material and said that the slide would be available and that copies would be available for the public. There were only four copies available for the public, but I added another 20. This is the document I'm talking about, and I presume all of you have one of those in front of you. So, at the June meeting of the City Council, you will be very likely asked to approve the proposed submitted by the Harbor Commission to greatly raise the annual fees paid to the city for both onshore and offshore mooring permits. In your review of this proposal, I would request that you consider this question. Do some of the boats in Newport Harbor pay no tideland fee at all? Every boat in Newport Harbor uses the public tidelands in exactly the same way. On a sunny day, every boat casts a shadow on the bottom of the bay, which shows the approximate claim on the tidelands. Whether it's secured to some cleats on a dock or secured to lines attached to floating buoys and the buoys secured to chains, to wigs on the bottom, there is no difference in its claim for private use of public tidelands. Every boat, then, should be paying for private use of public tidelands. In this familiar slide, do you have the slide, please? But I needed a slide for the public. This was promised to me by Jennifer today. And you provided to the public four copies. So I have no way of illustrating, other than to you, the City Council persons, the point of this. I presume you have this.
We do. Go ahead.
Okay. This shows two sketches, one of a dock with two boats on it and another of a mooring This familiar slide below boats are illustrated at a private dock compared to a boat on an offshore mooring. The text on the slide notes that for the same number of square feet of dock surface compared to the same number of square feet determined to be the footprint of a boat on a 40-foot mooring, the dock owner pays $30 a month, while the mooring permit will pay $480 per month as a tideland fee. This is actually a dock to boat. Harrison, if you look again at the drawing, you will see that there are two boats, one on each side of the wooden dock. A minimal fee is paid for the dock, but no tideland fee is paid for the boats.
I'm sorry. You're going to need to...
...the non-discrimination requirement of the code.
Sir, I need you to finish up, please. That was three minutes, sir.
Well, all right. You are quite aware of the code and its requirements, so I don't need to repeat that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Adam Leverens again. A couple updates on things. At the last regular council meeting, I had submitted written comments about the inquiry whether or not yacht clubs will be exempted or otherwise immune from these proposed 300 to 500% increase in fees that mooring holders face. I have not yet received a clear response to that inquiry. I think I'll intend to email each of you individually in the next week and see if I can elicit a response to that. Also, right around the time of the last meeting, I had made a request to the City Clerk's office. Harbor Commission has said that their recommendation has been forwarded to council, so I requested that recommendation as of May 20th that apparently doesn't exist yet. I hate to keep consuming staff's time and asking for it. I will do so again tomorrow, but it's a matter of timing. I know you have the 72-hour Ahead of Meeting Brown Act things and all that, but this has been going on for so long. And if we're told a recommendation has been forwarded to council, I'd really like to see it. And then dovetailing with what was just said, I have acquaintances on moorings, acquaintances that own homes with peers and own moorings. And my position is that the State Lands Commission benchmark rate for Orange County, 45.1 cents a square foot per year, is a fair rate. That was set in June of 2022. They have lots of expertise in this. They use Newport Harbor data to set it. The Newport peer permit, residential peer permit rate is 56 cents per square foot per year, a little bit higher than the state benchmark, but by God, we're in Newport Beach, so I think that's okay. Mooring permities are currently paying about 240% more than the city's peer permit rate. And as a recently new mooring permitty, I'm even willing to accept that, because by God, I'm in Newport Beach. And then there's the CBRE appraisal, which comes in closely in line with those state and city rates that are assumed to be fair. So everything looks okay. And then the State Lands does the Huntington Harbor, because they set fees for that, which are all comparable. So when this does come before you, you've got four reliable sources indicating rates are pretty fair and equal. And you've heard me drone on for this, about this for months, but I've asked that you folks attend Harbor Commission meetings. The city attorney advised against it. You know, there's so much involved here. Just please, please, please become informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neil, members of the council, my name once again is Jim Moser, and I'm pleased that you invited public comments, not only on non-agenda items, but also on agenda items, because during the council announcements, which is Roman numeral 12, I was surprised not to hear an announcement about something I read about this morning in Stu News, which is a coffee with the mayor event that it said would be coming up this Friday from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at 377 Pacific Coast Highway, but it did not say whether it was East or West Pacific Coast Highway. So I wonder if we could get a clarification whether that event is actually going to happen, because I think there are many residents who would like to have coffee with the mayor, and is it East or West Coast Highway? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. All right. Well, I'm not sure whether it's East or West. No, it's not Corona del Mar. It's the one over near, yeah, Mayor's Mile area. West. All right, there you go. West. Look forward to seeing you, Jim. It's going to be great. Yeah, we're going to be, we'll be, it's the one that's kind of at the triangle. It's got the mattress shop next to it. So anyway, it'll be fun, I'm sure. Bayside and PCH area.
Mr. Mayor, can you choose a local coffee place next time?
Like, literally in the middle of Newport Beach? Yeah, I think we can probably do okay. All right. Yeah, anyway. The reason, just to be clear, the reason we've chosen Starbucks for this one is because they're actually, they're actually doing a month right now where they are supporting veterans when folks purchase online cards. And given that, we just recognize a huge difference between veterans and Memorial Day. But given that we just had a discussion along of Memorial Day this weekend, I thought that highlighting that program would probably be a nice one. So anyway, I didn't...
I take my comments back.
No, 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 I understand. I do, I do want to highlight that. If I do, assuming this goes well and I decide to have more coffees, and Jim's going to make sure it goes well, I'm sure, then we will make sure that we're talking with folks who are a little bit more local than Starbucks. But that is why we chose Starbucks this week. Or I, not we, I chose Starbucks this month. Okay, let's go into the public hearing, item number 17, and we'll go ahead and have a brief staff report on this one.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil and City Council members. Assistant City Manager Simone Jurgis with you today, and along with me is Acting Deputy Director Jaime Mario. Before you is just a, it's going to be a resolution, and what you're, we're asking the council to do is to approve that, and that would send a notice to the Airport Land Use Commission. We've been working on our housing element implementation documents. We went to ALUC last week. They found our documents to be inconsistent with the ALUPE, their land use plan. By statute requirements, if the council considers overriding ALUC, today's resolution would be important to send them a notice. And then we'll be back to you July 23rd for another public hearing to go over all the housing implementation documents. And that's what we have this evening.
All right. Any questions or discussion up here? I recognize the amount of work going into this process. I recognize the amount of work going on at the General Plan Update Commission and do appreciate the amount, everything you're doing on this as we continue to move forward. We've received a few emails from folks concerned about the process. We remain concerned about the process as well. This is not exactly, we're not exactly sitting here cheering the entire Rena process as itself, but because there are a couple people who have emailed in asking about challenging the legality of Rena the same way Huntington Beach has, I was wondering, Ms. Summerhill, I didn't prep you for this, but I was wondering if you might have an update for us on the, on how litigation's been going, trying to push back on that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just keep it brief, and suffice to say, it's been unsuccessful.
Yeah, that's, that is, that's true. That's brief and true. All right.
Bad.
Yeah. Poorly. Anyway. So, yeah, good job. It was funny. All right, anyway, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I, I understand and appreciate the concern and frustration that some people have as part of the process. But we have been working for years now on the housing element. This is a implementing the housing element that we've sent over to HCD, and so, again, thank you. But before we have any kind of discussion or motion, let's go out to public comments on this item. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Grant, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, the only thing I would add to that very succinct comment is that other cities that have been objecting would have exactly the same response, that it's been unsuccessful. And so we do appreciate the comments from the public and are sensitive to those concerns, but it's not like there's a path forward that we haven't taken and other cities have taken that have seen more success, if I'm not incorrect.
You're definitely right. Okay, we'll go ahead and go to public comments on this item.
Mayor O'Neil, members of the council, first of all, ask that the coffee with the mayor fits at the Starbucks, which is at the little shopping center at the corner of PCH and Bayside Drive, which was a alternate location to this for a new City Hall at one time. That is actually East Pacific Coast Highway, so people should be going to 377 East Pacific Coast Highway, not West.
I will see there. That's my bad. All right. Let's make sure he gets his three minutes back, because that's fair. That's like verification.
Yeah, the bridge there divides east and west. There's a little plaque in the middle of it showing east and west.
Our clerk agrees that it's east, and also will give you three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, I don't need three minutes, but I think it was unfortunate that the Airport Land Use Commission was presented a package of a whole lot of things, many of which they would not have objected to, but part of which they did, which is the new housing by the airport, which we know they objected to before, and you've overruled them before. But I personally do not think that's the right thing to do. I think they have legitimate concerns about that new housing, which we should have addressed when we adopted the housing element, and that went before them. It's also unfortunate you have different state mandates telling you to do different things, and this particular action you're taking tonight actually requires you, the state requires you to make a finding tonight, and I do not see how you can make the finding you have to make tonight, which is adding that new housing will be furthering the state's effort to minimize the public's exposure to excessive noise and safety hazards. I don't think you can make that finding, because especially it contradicts your own city council policy, which already with housing further away from the airport states that you, the council, believe that the impacts related to the JWA overflights over those other homes farther from the airport already are the most significant threat we face to the quality of life in Newport Beach. So how can it be, if those homes are threatened, that these new ones that would be here under the jet path, here under the small piston plane flight path, how could those be less impacted? How is this minimizing impacts? If that's true, then you are saying to the people who live elsewhere in Newport Beach who are threatened by the airport, that their concerns are insignificant because they're much smaller than the concerns that these people will have. So I think you're in an unfortunate place, both because you put too many things before the Airport Land Use Commission, and second, because you have contradictory directions from the state, as you've recognized before. And I really don't think you can sincerely make the finding that one state agency is asking you to make tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and unless I have further discussion up here, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve staff recommendation. Seconded by Councilmember Blom. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
All right, thank you. Next up is item number, excuse me, item number 18, which is on its third hearing today. Before I go out to the, the company's representatives that are here, has anything changed since the, let me back up. At the last council meeting, the, the understanding was that the franchisee would be giving up their Tier One hauler, but since we're here, it seems that that has not been the case. So what has happened since our last council meeting?
So we have offered them to rescind voluntarily their Tier One franchise. We have not received any confirmation in any capacity that that is their intent. In terms of implementation efforts, we have seen through client conversation that there is back and forth, but it's not through written confirmation through the hauler. So confirmation between client and hauler, were one of the deliverables requested. We have not received that, but as of correspondence with the commercial entity that they service, we have been able to confirm information on two accounts. So under the existing non-compliance, we do find that they have made the effort, but within the rescindance of Tier One, we have not.
And then within the context of the, within the context of the non-compliance, though, staff's recommendation is still to terminate. So the question is, I hear what you're saying in terms of efforts, but are you, you are still not satisfied that they've met enough to justify maintaining the, the status?
That is correct. We have worked with them for over a year and a half to become compliant. We've had at least three sessions. I think we've been at this two months in terms of council intervention, and we're finally getting to a point of compliance. So once we move away from council intervention, I don't see implementation progress maintaining, especially as we near a mixed-use, mixed-waste material recovery diversion facility deadline, December 31st, 2024.
Okay. All right, come on forward. I apologize real quickly. Mr. Wagon, did you want to say something before?
Yeah, I appreciate the mayor's efforts here, the last two meetings of this item. You've done a great job trying to figure this out, but I'm starting to get impatient with this one, so I want to see this get hammered out tonight, if we can, to end this. So either we accept these slowdowns or we, we move along. There's one client that they represent in Newport Beach, and, you know, it doesn't seem like much effort has been done here. Happy to hear them. I hate going after business, but it's a significant time suck for our staff and now for us, so I want to get this resolved.
Okay. All right.
Okay, Mayor O'Neil, council members, I'm John Katanjan, and once again, I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us. Last time, in good faith, based on what you told me, I agreed to surrender the Tier One and go with the Tier Two. Later, we find out that the staff report did not include the final emails that we sent to staff regarding Task Three and Four. And I think if that was included, we would have been compliant. I know, again, it was... compliant. I know, again, it was, we made that good faith effort, but once we saw that wasn't included and the evidence was, you know, just wasn't there, we believed the evidence was just withheld. We would not be here tonight, and we would be back in as a tier-one hauler. We've done everything. We've worked with the client far more than we've done with any other client. But I don't have control of what the client, what vendor they use for certain products, certain recyclables. That's out of my control. What we do is make sure we're compliant, followed staff's guidelines on where to unload the waste, and even though we could have done a lot better than what he suggested and helped with the diversion rates, we followed staff's guideline. But I think if he would have opened those final emails, you would have seen, it would have been in the staff report. It just, if I'm missing something, it wasn't there.
All right, so to be, to be clear, we didn't talk about any of those at the last meeting, but you were aware of those emails when you agreed to, to, with, to rescind the tier-one hauler status. So what changed for you specifically from the agreement that you made to us at the last, at the last council meeting?
Okay, I had asked my consultant that I use for these waste managers to review it, and I asked my legal counsel to review it. He says, you know, go back and ask them to take a look, because those final emails on Task Three and Four were not included in the staff report. And I think that's what's probably missing here. And I think if you would have seen those emails, we wouldn't be up for termination. After, since the store opened, which was over, was 30 years ago, we've been servicing them off and on, depending on, you know, who their vendor is at the time. But they use multiple vendors, and what we do is basically, you know, haul it to a place that recycles it. Now, I was told by staff I had to use a company in Stanton to process the waste. Then he found, well, that wasn't acceptable. I have better facilities, but I went with staff where to deliver the waste. My wife has done all the research with the store, worked with the store, emails back and forth, and he quit responding. And we've asked him with the emails, and with no response, did you get the final? And apparently he didn't, or he didn't open it, but he didn't forward it to you.
Okay, and, and just to be clear, these are the emails that you're referencing that are in the staff report currently, because they were emails that you sent to us?
Because I sent them to you.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. All right. Did you want to add anything?
No, just the, "Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I want to appreciate the time." But I also do want to say that I did those reports. I, you know, I sent, they were late, but because of a time constraint, I only got time by May 9th. So I was able to meet with the store, and I was able to finish Task Three and Four. I sent them to him May 10th at 2:33 p.m. I have not had a response. I've resent them. I don't know if he's not getting my emails, or if staff just doesn't want to respond. You know, I don't know what the issue is. You guys have responded to me after the date. I can't get staff to respond. We've totally went above and beyond for this one account. I don't want to, you know, I know it's just one account. I keep hearing it tonight. But it's not just the one account. It's the city of Newport Beach. We, you know, we've been in this city for a long time, and I'd hate to get kicked out just for, you know, we've done everything that we've needed to do. And I just would appreciate that, the, I don't know, the, I don't know how you say it, but just if you guys could please look at the information, and please just, if we could, you know, I don't want to give up tier-one.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do we have any other questions up here? No. All right. Thank you. All right. We'll go out to public comment at this time. Do we have any public comment on this item? All right, we'll bring it back up here. Okay, a couple of questions. Ms. Summerhill, on this item, you've had a chance to review the, the documents that have been submitted by, by Key. Have you seen anything in there that would, is, you know, in the city attorney's office that would lead you to a different conclusion than what our Public Works recommendation is up here?
Thank you, Mayor. So the, the code provides in 12.63.140 that the council can terminate for a failure to comply with, with the franchise. And so I think dating back to when it was actually first executed and through the time that it was brought to council, there was a failure to comply. I won't speak for Public Works. I don't believe that those tasks in Three, Three and Four have been fully completed, but I do think that if the council, if it's a pleasure to terminate at this point, I think that we have adequate evidence to do so.
All right. And then over to Public Works. So the, a couple of things set up there. One of them is that the emails themselves show satisfaction. It doesn't sound like you agree with that. And then the second one is the allegation that you're not having discussion with them. So if you could maybe address both of those, and then we'll bring it back up here.
Certainly. By the way, my name's Charles Springer. I forgot to introduce myself. Apologies, but thank you for your time, Mayor and Council. With that, I did mention at the May 14th meeting, my findings related to the emails supplied by Key Disposal. So in that, I indicated that written confirmation between the hauler and the client was not submitted. Key Disposal provided a narrative. I was able to corroborate one item with the store, in which that we deemed compliant. The other item, I wasn't able to verify until May 22nd. So with that, and that's by conversation with the store, but it's not supplied by Key Disposal. So those inconsistencies are really troubling. And apologies, I forgot the second part of your question.
Well, okay, hang on. Now I'm actually trying to figure this one out. So you're saying there were two items. You're saying one of them's been satisfied, the other one hasn't, and the only reason it hasn't is because they haven't provided you in writing what the client provided to you?
They have met all the requirements because I was able to communicate with the store to verify information. So in my opinion, based on what we have asked, they have met those requirements.
And could I clarify just a little? This, this is just something Charles did with the store, not the applicant. And some background, I know we didn't do the staff report here, but remember, this franchise started November 222. They actually signed the franchise in August of '23 because they couldn't become compliant. So their compliance started at that date. All these things should have been compliant then, of which we have been fighting to the tooth and nail, to the point now where we're just getting what we need. So there's, there is a level of confidence we're a little concerned of. There's another item in here that maybe the city attorney can address, too, that, interesting little franchise, they go through what they call a waste broker. So you saw in their letter that they addressed to council that they're not responsible for this recyclables, they're not responsible for this. To the city, our franchise, you're responsible for the whole account. You need to account for the recyclables. You need to make sure that you're recycling. So our pictures from their waste lot are full of cardboard. They're not recycling, and they've been doing this for some time, and it's on them to make sure the person who's supposed to do the cardboard is doing the cardboard, not to say we're not it. I'm sorry, there's more to this, but...
No, no, I think I understand now. I understand. There's, I guess my questions were dancing on the head of a pin a little bit. Your, your answer is a little bit more along the lines of, there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of, okay, all right. Councilmember Grant, and then Councilmember Blom.
Just quickly, I mean, I guess that was my same question. I was a little unsure of whether there was an actual compliance or not. And it sounds like there is, but it's been a very difficult situation, and there's a trust factor going on here. You know, obviously, in the city, we want to embrace business to come here and succeed here, and we want to support business in our city. That's a very important role that we on the council play in making sure that, you know, there's good policies in our city. But we have to obviously have a balance with what staff is doing and how much staff time we're putting into something, and making sure that we're actually, we're compliant at the next level to the state or federal government or whatever's happening. So, you know, I, again, you know, strongly support business in our city, and I do want to see us do whatever we can do. But I understand the frustration and the amount of time that we're expending and resources that we're expending can exceed the cost-benefit analysis. And so I, you know, I'm a little sort of push-pull here, that it sounds like there is compliance, but we're doing too much work on our end to actually make this work from a cost-benefits analysis. Is that kind of correct?
Yes. For context, we have seven fixed route haulers, a total of 895 accounts. I'm working with one hauler with one account. So it's a lot of time to expend for one account.
And maybe can I, can I follow up on that real quickly, sir? I'll come over to you, Councilmember Blom, in just a second. Follow up on that. I guess the, the question is, given everything that we've, we've seen so far, given the waste stream problems that we've, on a spot audit that we did as part of this process, seen the noncompliance problems, could we, in good faith, tell the state that we feel like there's, there's compliance? Because it doesn't sound like we could. Because that's, that's one of the biggest problems with this whole process, is that it's not, it's not that these are standards that we as a city have set. It's that we're essentially a pass-through for the state, and if we don't, if we can't show proper compliance, we get hit really hard. And this is, this is the point that we've been pressing on all of our haulers. So that's why I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand this. Because to, to Councilmember Grant's point, it's not really a time issue. It's, although that's not great, but it's really an overall compliance standpoint with the state. Could we realistically, at this point, given what we've seen, go to the state and say, hey, don't worry about it, we got it? This one's good?
The state has been briefed in our monthly meetings regarding our submissions and our efforts to gain compliance with different haulers, different accounts. With that, they see the progress that we're making in terms of gaining compliance overall. Holistically, we are doing pretty well. We're on a great track. But when it comes to the time expended in terms of enforcement actions needed to remedy certain noncompliance items, it is becoming a little problematic.
Okay. Councilmember Blom?
Thanks. I appreciate any small business trying to make it, but I think always the onus is on us to be able to succeed in the environment that we're in. So that being said, I'd like to make a motion to move a staff recommendation to terminate this agreement.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wagon. Any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance 2024-14, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, terminating a non-inclusive franchise agreement for commercial solid waste. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Appreciate the time. We're now going to move into motion for reconsideration. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions? All right, seen none. Tonight, we're going to be adjourned in memory of Tom Phillips, led by Councilmember Wagon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we adjourn in the memory of Newport Beach resident Tom Phillips, who passed away on April 18th after a 10-year battle with Parkinson's disease. Tom was a veteran of the United States Army who began his career working for advertisement agencies and publishing companies. He used that experience to start his own company in 1974, Phillips Publishing, which later became Phillips International. Over the next three decades, Tom grew his business into a major publisher of newsletters, magazines, directories, and eventually online information services for consumers and businesses. In 1993, he founded Eagle Publishing, a leading source of books and periodicals. Tom also founded a nonprofit organization, the Phillips Foundation, which sponsored, which sponsored programs for print journalists. He was named the Newsletter Publishers Association's Publisher of the Year in 1989, and was elected as the first member of the Newsletter Publishers Hall of Fame in 1994. Throughout his long career, he served many nonprofit groups and organizations as a board member and fundraiser. Tom is survived by his four children and five grandchildren, and I believe there's a service coming up this week. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and we stand adjourned.